We're going to call the meeting back to order. And I want to acknowledge Councilman Glover, who was having some technical issues in the last hearing, but he's on now. We can still hear him a little bit. But Councilman Glover, we've got you. We're going to hear Bill 21-0014, City Fire Department Reporting Requirements, for the purpose of requiring the Fire Chief and the Baltimore City Fire Department to report annually certain information to the mayor and city council of Baltimore, requiring a report to be made available on the department's website, and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on January 11th, 2021, and the bill was sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett. I'm going to open the floor to Councilmember Burnett, the sponsor, for comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee and staff, and thank you for reconvening this hearing to address this bill. So to provide just another overview, the reporting requirements bill, the intention of it is to require the department to produce annual staffing reports that break down the supervisory promotions, their hiring practices, their high school program, basically with the idea being that we need to create more transparency within the department and how they go about hiring in Baltimore City, how they supervise or promote people to supervisory positions within the department so that the department is more reflective of the citizens of Baltimore. This is in response to the 2020 Fire Department Staffing Study that was done by the Labor Committee last year. And I do want to just take a second to highlight a few of the findings that I think really speak to why this bill is necessary. We do want to acknowledge that there's been a lot of progress that has been made since 1953, when the Board of Fire Commissioners first voted to allow African-American firefighters within the department. But what we see, though, is that while there has been a tremendous amount of representation, better representation within the department as it relates to race and gender, there's still a lot more work that has to be done. The report found that while we have a city that is 63% African-American, only 31% of the Fire Department's personnel are African-American. The report also found that even as late as 2004, the department passed a class that was all white, and that made news, especially in the city of Baltimore. We also know that the report exposed issues with local hiring. Only, the report found that 64% of the 1,700 employees in the Baltimore City Fire Department live outside of the city of Baltimore, which has resulted in an estimated $2 million in lost income taxes for the city of Baltimore. When we talk about gender, it is also very similarly inequitable in representation. Women only make up 14% of the uniformed members in the Baltimore City Fire Department, and of that, only 61 of them are assigned to fire suppression. The 142 are in EMS. And then when we look at promotions, there were 314 promoted positions in fire suppression and EMS. Women only occupy 27 of those seats. And so when we look at this breakdown, and I understand, Mr. Chair, there will be more data presented to the committee, so I don't want to belabor the point, but it is very stark to see a department in the city of Baltimore that, you know, if you are African-American, if you're a woman, the likelihood that you will rise through the ranks is pretty slim. I do want to acknowledge that we've had meetings with Chief Ford and his staff on this legislation, and I do know that they've come prepared to present some of the steps that they've already taken to address the concerns in that report and that we're asking in this bill to continue to be made public. And so I do want to acknowledge that those conversations have been had and that work is being done to address this. But I also know that if we don't codify these kind of changes, it doesn't really matter who the commissioner is. We all know that at some point, this council will look different, the leadership of the department will look different. And so it's important that we codify these things into law, that we shine a light on these disparities, and that we have continued oversight and accountability for our department so that when we look back at the makeup in a few years, it is more reflective of the city that funds this department, that we all live in and that we care about, and that young people who look like me have an opportunity to enter the department and rise through the ranks, that live in the city, that care about the city, and want to fight for the city and represent Baltimore and the Baltimore City Fire Department. So with that, I'll hand it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. We're going to hear now from the agency representatives. We're going to start off with the Baltimore City Fire Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, city council members. We did make recommendations to modify the bill. Certainly, we'll have my chief of staff introduce some of those changes. And we're not, I must say, we're not versed to presenting data and reporting out to the council. Of course, the only concern I've had is the amount of the labor intensity that's added to that process. I also need to point out the fact that, yes, we've made significant improvements, and I don't want to say back to 1953, but we've made many improvements since my arrival here, and certainly my predecessor did some amazing things, too, trying to incorporate more individuals in the Fire Department from diverse backgrounds. We literally have gone, since I've been here, one of our classes was majority-minority and female, and another class was equal as far as minorities and majority population, the first time in the history of the Fire Department. Over the last several years, in 2009, case in point, one out of every eight applicant was a female. In 2015, we went up to one out of six. In 2020, we were at one out of four. So we've been doing things progressively moving the right way. If you speak in African-American applications, in 2009, it was four out of 10. In 2015, it was closer to five out of 10, which is half, and almost half. And then in 2020, it was absolutely half. So we've been aggressively working on that. Also, put together high school programs in order to actually put our young people in the position where they can be trained as EMS people and learn more about the fire service and choose as occupation. Consequently, it would improve our minority numbers in the hiring process, past the hiring process, actually, because at that point, they're part of the system. So I wanted my chief of staff to point out some of the recommendations that we've made, and it is high in our priorities, certainly to continuously improve the numbers of minorities in our organization, including to improve the number of city residents. But the challenge we have is, if you look at our organization as a whole right now, and you say, "This number of city residents are living outside the city", well, we could hire them, and they live in the city when we hire them, and consequently, they move outside the city. So we fight that challenge from the beginning. Now, Chief of Staff.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. So the Fire Department does just have a few proposed amendments to the bill as currently drafted. The amendments only relate-
We're not at the amendments part yet?
Oh, I apologize.
Can we bring up the amendments a little bit later?
Absolutely. Excuse me.
Sure. Thank you.
Sorry about that, Mr. Chair.
Oh, no worries. All right. Chief Ford, if you're done with your presentation, we'll do questions?
I am. Yes, please.
Then we'll get to the amendments after that. So just what we're going to do, we're going to open the floor to questions from the committee. We'll start with two questions in the first round and one question in the second round. I'll start off with my questions. And my first question is this: How often does the Fire Department open up their pre-employment screening process for the EMT firefighter position? And typically, how long do you hire off of the eligibility list?
Okay. We try to do it every two years. We've had a couple lists that really have run a lot long. Case in point, the list when I initially came here was a list that had been in existence for close to five years, or just right over five years. Our goal is to do two years. This past time, because of COVID and other circumstances, it looks like we're going to be closer to three years or maybe a little bit better. So the common practice for EMT firefighter is, it should be two years, certainly no more than three.
Okay, but right now, you said the most recent list is five?
No, the most recent list, I think, we're going on four years right now. Let me let somebody ring in on that. Lisa, are we just over four years now?
The last process on screen for 2015.
Yes. Yeah. So even though it says 2015, 2015 is when the process began. It's not when the process completed and the list is certified. So I think we're just over four years on that list.
I see. So just to clarify, so you start the process in 2015, and you don't start hiring off of that list until 2016, '17?
Whenever the list is certified, and it normally, after the examination process, after the application process, the written examination process, the subsequent physical agility test, and then soon after that, the list, and then the interview process, the community of members interview our members and select, put them in order. At that point, the list becomes certified.
That leads me to the second question. So can you walk us through the phases of pre-employment from the initial application employment? Can you just walk us through the steps that folks would have to go through?
Director Wood, are you online?
Yes.
Okay. Can you start the process of walking through?
Yes. So what happens is, of course, they would first apply for the position. The position is posted for approximately two weeks, and they submit their applications. Department of Human Resources then qualifies those applications, at which time, we're given the list of those people who have met the minimum qualifications for the position. Once we receive that list, we would then schedule them for the written exam for EMT firefighter. And once we get that process completed, all those that have passed the written exam would then be contacted and scheduled for the physical ability test as well as an interview. Once they pass both of those processes, the physical ability test and the interview, they would then move on to what is considered, they would receive a conditional offer of employment at that point that would allow us then to move into their medical examination, background check, et cetera, to finish the hiring process. Once they've completed all of those successfully, that's when we would send them the final offer letter and start the academy.
And, Mr. Chair, I received just a text a moment ago that said, even though the list is dated 2015, we didn't hire off that list until March 2017. We literally have somebody recruit school March 2017.
Thank you for clarifying. I'm going to move on and allow someone else to ask a question. Are there any questions from the committee? Councilman Burnett?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hold on. So I guess I'll try to continue on this line, line of questioning around the... Sorry. My apologies, Mr. Chair. I thought you had a couple more questions. I was still drawing mine down. Okay. So part of, well, I guess in response to just the overall questions around the list itself, the challenge, or the reason I think that this is important, and we'll get to this further, around the issue of reporting and how often the reporting should take place. I think just as a bit of commentary that if, you know, if we have a list that stretches four to five years, then, you know, the time it takes to change the culture, change the demographics of the folks coming into the department can be very lengthy as well, which is why I think it is important to continue in the way that the bill is drafted, to have a little bit more oversight over that process and accountability over that process. I'll just stop there. But I do want to talk a little bit about, one of the things that the bill spotlights is this issue of promotions. How many African-American battalion chiefs are in the fire suppression, out of the total number of battalion chiefs?
I think it's listed on your screen right now. It's saying suppression, four out of 27. And, I mean, four out of 31, and EMS, one out of six.
And second question related to that, Mr. Chair. And when we looked at similar data around African-American captains and fire suppression, we saw that similar disparities there. But the other concern I have is where they are assigned. Can you speak to how many of the battalion chiefs are assigned to the fifth battalion and where that's located?
Okay. Let me, can I add some information to your first question before I move on to the next question? We have an established testing process where people apply for promotion and they take an exam. Over the last several years, we, at one time, and it is based, I should point out, it's based on placing. In other words, wherever you come up on the exam, that's pretty much the order, based on contract, that you will be promoted if positions are available. About four years ago, I added an in-basket component, an oral component, to it because, Councilman Burnett, one of... My doctoral dissertation was in diversity in the fire service. So I come in with being aware of some of the challenges that historically minorities and females have had in entering the Fire Department and migrating through the system. So one of the things I added to it was, like I said, a component that would allow an oral component that would be more practical, meaning that you could explain, based on an incident or circumstances, what would be the right moves and the right things to do. Scholarly information tells us that's a component that caused least disparate impact in the process. So what you're seeing is the results of us becoming more in line with best practices in the country and best practices within mind of diversity. Now, I've got, I don't know off the top of my head, I think we have it in this report where everyone's assigned. Hang on one second. I don't think I have my Ops Chief online, but I'll get that answer to you before we move much further. But I can tell you what winds up happening is the way people are assigned in areas that they're in is, when they're initially promoted, they're moved to whatever open positions that are available based upon their rank order of promotion. After one year of being in that location, they can put in for a transfer, and they can move to whatever area of the city they choose to. Now, granted, it has to be based on the approval of the Fire Chief's office, but they have the right to move to whatever area they choose to. And what winds up happening sometimes, and I think probably something that you're heading toward, if you don't mind me heading there early, is that sometimes people migrate together. And sometimes that's ideology, but sometimes it also appears to be race, where sometimes people end up gathering together in pools. And we've done certain things to combat that without flipping the crayon box upside down. Part of that is, when I initially got here, you could put in for a transfer right away. I forced people to work for a year where they were located at, where they were sent to initially. And that would put them in a position where they'd get used to and get comfortable being in different areas so they could be more open-minded about it. And coming out of recruit school, we are deliberate about where we send people, trying to encourage diversity in certain areas.
So, yeah, and this is something that I know came up in the Labor Committee hearings last year, last term. And what we found, or that report finds, and the committee members, everything that I'm pulling up as far as data is in your inboxes in the reports in the committee. But the committee found that the first battalion, the second battalion, and the sixth battalion had significantly lower numbers of African-Americans, if any at all, assigned to them. And that the three of the four battalion chiefs that are African-American are in the fifth battalion. And as far as captains, there's 10 African-American captains. Seven of them are concentrated between the fourth and fifth battalion. And so, as then, you mentioned the same thing, that folks are aggregating and the same response around, you know, pushing them to request for transfers. But clearly, what we're seeing, that the data just has not changed. And so, you know, I'm not accusing, I don't want to accuse your office of denying requests. I don't know how that has gone. But even anecdotally, when I've talked to folks that are familiar with the makeup of the department, one individual was like, "Yeah, they send African-Americans to the West Side", and the data reflects that. And when you look at the battalions in southeast Baltimore and north Baltimore, they're not diverse. And so I think that's where the challenge lies, in that there does need to be more intentionality in ensuring that not only are there equal opportunities for individuals to advance, but that the battalions are not racially segregated in the way that they are and have been for a very extended period of time. Those are my two questions, Mr. Chair. I don't know if anyone else has any.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Any other questions from folks on the committee? Sorry, I can't see folks. I don't see any other questions. If folks have a question, please shout out. If not, I have another question, just to follow up, Chief Ford, to the... A list come through in 2015. You explained that we didn't hire from that list until 2017? Or we didn't pick up someone from that list until 2017? What takes so long there? Why does that take so long?
At that point, it was an unusual set of circumstances. Just like right now, we have an unusual set of circumstances with COVID-19. The unusual set of circumstances at that time was we had hired a new organization to prepare the test, literally prepare the written test. And consequently, if you're aware, I use citizens in order to do the interview. But the questions have to be valid and reliable, so they have to be studied and, at that point, passed on. We hired an outside agency. Because of diversity concerns that we all had, and I had certainly, is we changed the way the process, the written exam was written. Written exam was written at a lower level than it was initially. It was specifically written based upon quality issues, like integrity and things of that nature. And I made certain that even if some questions might have been, might have said something like "fire service", it was literally only background information. It wasn't a situation where you had to know the fire service because I knew at that point it would put certain people in a more advantageous position than others. So the process of us bringing on the new team to do the testing, so... And working through the process with DHR, it took a while at that time.
Okay. Yeah. And then, looking at the numbers, can you explain why there was such a significant decrease from every step in the process? Do you have any insight on that? Have you done any after-action reports or done any analysis as to why we've had folks shake out so significantly from every step?
Yeah. We've done some analysis on the way they shook out. In respects to, we did very well in respects to going from the written exam, we did very well going from the written exam to the physical agility test. The challenge is, the physical agility test, and I want to point out, women in particular, caused a significant issue with our process of hiring women and bringing women on the other side of the process. But I should point out that I changed from the physical agility test we had when I got here, which is something that's normally used throughout the country, primarily because, I'm also a member of women in the fire service, primarily because a concern that women in the fire service had that that process caused a disparate impact. So in conversation with other female fire chiefs and other women in the fire service that I know very well, I went out and solicited a new process.
Thank you, Chief Ford. Any other questions from folks on the committee? Councilman Burnett?
Chair. So I wanted to touch on the issue of city residency. From the rank of lieutenant through fire chief, your agency, and forgive me, this is the latest data I have, if it's different, let me know, has 317 uniformed personnel in supervisory or management position. And approximately 25% of those are city residents. Baltimore City Administration Administrative Manual Policy 2251 allows agency heads to use residency preference points for internal promotions. Has the Fire Department explored this option to provide an incentive for personnel who live in the city or to encourage people to move back into the city?
I think that's... Do we have Joanne from DHR on the call?
Hi, this is Kim Humphrey with DHR. I don't believe we do.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Lisa, can you answer that question? And I'll follow up behind you.
Yes. So the residency points for internal promotions has not been utilized before. One, because the process for internal promotions is defined and determined by the collective bargaining agreement and would most likely have to be negotiated as another piece of the process. But it is certainly something we can look at.
Chief Ford?
Yes.
Hi, this is Joanne Ashen from the Department of Human Resources.
Yes, ma'am.
Sure. I'm the Chief of HR, Shared Services and Recruitment. Just wanted to say that we also do not have a requirement in the city to require people to live in the city unless you report directly to an agency head. So that is something also that the officers that are below the rank of battalion chief do not have to necessarily live within the city structure. As Lisa said, it does have to be bargained.
And there are many municipalities, I can think of a few in Pennsylvania, that require their employees to live in the city or within a certain mile limit of the city, the center of the city, or fire station of the city. And they certainly do better on diverse, on city residents because of that, because it's a requirement in the first place to be employed there.
Correct.
So as a quick follow-up, does the department intend to include this preference points in association with the union?
Well, one of the things that- Well, one, one of the things that uh Lisa raised that it, it, it could possibly become a part of um negoti- a negotiation item. So I can't, if, if it is that, I really can't talk much about that, but I'm gonna research it. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. We're gonna, um, we're actually gonna move on. And I know there were a couple amendments that were sent out. I'm sorry, um before we jump into the amendments, we're, we're gonna open the floor to public testimony. Um so the committee is the committee will take public testimony, please speak clearly into the microphone and state your name for the record. Um I'm gonna announce if there are any folks. I don't see any hands up at the moment. And are there any folks on? Uh there are no folks on the phone, so um we're, we're actually just gonna move on past public testimony since there are no folks um stepping up. Onto the amendments. So there were a, a couple amendments that were, were actually sent out. And I just want to have an opportunity to talk through those amendments. We're not gonna, we're not gonna vote on those amendments today. I believe we, we still have some work to do on this, on this bill before we actually vote on it. So give me one second. We're gonna start with the amendments proposed by the Fire Department. So can you zoom in a little bit? And I, I'll allow um uh if you can, Chief Ford and Fire Department, can you please explain uh some of the changes you recommended and uh and, and why you recommended those changes?
Um the only amendments that we um are requesting is related specifically to the mandatory hearing requirement, um which falls in um Section D of the uh bill. Um the way that we drafted uh our proposed amendment um would be to provide um full notice to the City Council of 45 days in advance of post, the posting of the application period for entry-level EMT firefighter or EMS positions. Um this would provide the City Council with notice in advance of the start of the pre-employment screening process, so that the council could then call a hearing if they deemed it necessary based on the circumstances that exist at that time. Um and I, I do apologize, I sent out a, a, a second reverse reversion that I, I don't think that you all have on the screen because I sent it out so belatedly. Um but I, but I'll explain. Um the notice that we would provide would um include specific information about um one, the overall pre-employment screening process, two, the recruitment strategy, three, uh race, gender, city residency data for each phase of the pre-employment screening process for the two prior recruitment efforts for the position that we are hiring for at that point in time. And four, any steps taken or plan to be taken to improve equity in the hiring process and to reduce potential barriers to entry as specifically related to race, gender and city residency. And as I said before, that way the City Council would have an opportunity to review all this material and determine if a hearing was necessary, rather than the current bill proposal, which would mandate a hearing before each um separate phase of the screening process going on into the future. Uh and the other change that I made was just to align with um the change that uh I believe Councilman Burnett sent around, which was to change the effective date for, to July 1st.
Right now, I'm sorry if I missed this, um we, we didn't get the uh, the most up-to-date changes that you made to the amendments.
I will resend. I sent it probably around 12:45, so.
I understand, thank you. All right, and we're gonna move on to the oh, excuse me, are there any questions about the amendments as proposed? Uh Councilman Burnett?
Uh, you, Mr. Chair, and I do want to acknowledge the uh, the sort of steps that we've come to, to getting closer, uh I think to finding a resolution on these two areas. Um the one uh thing I would want to point out to the committee is there's some subtle language differences between the bill. Uh in Section D, line, number two, line forwards, says any steps to take into improve equity in the hiring process and to reduce barriers. Uh the proposed um amendments from the Fire Department um are subtly different, I'm trying to pull up both so I can see it at the same time, because I can't really see what's on the screen there, sorry y'all. So that's what I've, I have. Um and there's a subtle change uh where it says taken, they, the Fire Department is trying to insert or plan to be taken uh to reduce potential barriers to entry, which is different than what we have, which is any steps taken to improve equity in the hiring process and reduce barriers to, to entry. And I think it's a very subtle change uh in, in what is required to be reported out. Uh it's one thing to uh note plans. Uh it is a different thing to note the actual steps that have actually been taken um to address the, these very real concerns. And so I, I do want to point to the committee that that is a very subtle but substantive change. Um the other piece, the more, the larger um difference that I think we're still trying to work out, and I do want to assure the committee that we will continue dialogue to, to find this out is um, you know, the, the department essentially is proposing producing a report in lieu of uh coming to or being required to come to the council for uh an oversight or a series of oversight hearings. Uh I want to note that while absolutely am in favor of reporting, uh requesting the agency to come before the council is not uh something that is out of line or, or without precedent. Uh we, this council regularly has been monthly oversight hearings uh that are led by Councilman Costello and uh will be Chairman Conway uh in, in reviewing the Baltimore Police Department's budget and policing practices. Uh DPW has annual uh and, and ongoing um consent decree hearings that are open to the public where they have to explain the steps that they're making to keep our waterways clean. Uh the Finance Department uh comes on a, in a, a regular basis uh to, to talk about the city's finances. We have a buy-in or audits and oversight uh commission that was established by Chairman Costello to ensure that uh agencies are running effectively and, and the dollars and cents are, are all adding up. And so I don't think that there is, to ask the department, the Fire Department, which frankly rarely comes before the City Council um with, uh you know, at, at all. Uh and I'm not saying that they're, are reluctant to, they've come when they're asked, but there's not a regular oversight into uh the operations of the Fire Department. I think it's important to note that producing a report and, and being requested to come in is much different than mandating that there be ongoing oversight over a very real situation, uh which the data bears out, that the, the, the hiring practices uh in place, which again, and I apologize, Chief Ford, I wasn't trying to imply that nothing has been done since the 50s. You've absolutely taken those dramatic steps um in, in, in improving the representation, representation in the department. So I do want to clear that up, wasn't trying to imply that. But clearly there are issues where, when it comes to the hiring practices of the Fire Department. Uh and we know that because these lists can, can, can let, last four or five years, sometimes seven years, uh before we have a new class come in, then we can literally mean that it could take decades to have a department uh at this pace that is better reflective of the citizens of Baltimore uh and where, and one in which that people live in the city, that they're African American and women. And we also know that there are challenges with the promotion process as well and where they are assigned. And so I do think that it is important that we try to preserve uh the, the hearing process within this bill so that there can, can be continued oversight in perpetuity, given the length and the scope and breadth of how long this process can take and how long it will take to uh change the, the look and demographic of the Baltimore City Fire Department. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh thank you, Councilman Burnett. Councilman Cohen?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Um just wanted to lend my support to my colleague from the 8th District um and what he is attempting to do through this legislation. Um in 2018, I was able to rename a fire station after Constantine Previs, um who I assume Chief Ford knows was a pioneer here in Baltimore for integrating our Fire Department. Um he was actually the deciding vote on a panel to remove Jim Crow and a bunch of discriminatory practices, specifically actually in the areas of discipline and promotion from the Baltimore City Fire Department. Um that work was legislative, uh that panel was legislated. And I think to Councilmember Burnett's point, we, in a city with a really dark history, not just obviously in our Fire Department, but in every city agency of racism, white supremacy and policies that have harmed um people of color, I, I think um in keeping with the spirit of certainly our mayor's focus on equity and also this council's focus on um, you know, supporting people from within our agencies, I, I think it's really important that uh to Councilman Burnett's point, that this be legislated, that oversight be consistent um and that we continue to hold ourselves and our agencies accountable to do better and that that's not a criticism, but it should be a way of business. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. I wanna um, I wanna remind folks, um this is an opportunity for questions. Um I think we all agree here that we want our Fire Department to do better on this. Um but I want to make sure we don't uh get too long-winded on, on, on that issue. I want to make sure that we, we address the amendments that they put forward and make sure that um we clarify any problems that we do or don't have with that. So are, are there any other questions about the amendments proposed by the, the Fire Department? Thank you. Um we're gonna jump to the amendments uh proposed by Councilman Burnett. If you can pull those up on the screen, please. Thank you. And Councilman Burnett, do, do you want to take a moment to explain uh the, the two changes that you suggested? And why?
Yes, so we are in agreeance that uh, so I'll start with Amendment Number Two, because that one we do agree on, that the uh implementation date needs to be adjusted uh from January 31st, which we clearly not gonna meet that deadline uh and substituted for July 1st. So that one is not um uh substantive really in any way. It's just changing when, when this would go into effect and when we're reporting would need to begin. Uh and so that is consistent with, with the Fire Department has proposed. Amendment Number One attempts to add more clarity on the, the reporting to the City Council around the department's hiring process uh and adds, you know, we, we really, I, my interest in this, and I'm open to feedback from the committee, is the pre-employment phase of the uh screening process, so your application, your written tests, your physical, physical agility tests, uh oral board interview uh occurs. We want that to make sure it occurs before the eligibility, eligibility list is established. Uh and again, that is just to in, improve the um, the transparency uh uh in which we are, um the department is moving forward. Um you know, we, we tried to make sure again that there, there was a hearing that, you know, a hearing process. I, I do want to preserve that. I think this adds more clarity in that we want to focus mainly on the development of this list. And as people move through the list, um you know, I do understand that there may be some administrative challenges within the department to come to the council multiple times per year. I am willing to continue to have conversations with the fire chief um to uh make, we, make sure we add more clarity on that, that, you know, I'm not really interested in, in the department having to come four to five times per year. Uh but I do think that when this list is being opened, uh when the, the hiring process is moving forward, that there, there is a legitimate plan put forth publicly as to how we are going to ensure equity in that process. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Um I want to um, I want to pose this question to the, the Fire Department about those proposed amendments. Um for the change about pre, pre-hiring, does that actually, would that allow us to preempt the, the, the development of the list? Does it actually satisfy that, that attempt that um Councilman Burnett is trying to?
I'm sorry, Councilman Burnett, could you clarify that again?
We're gonna change the language in, let me pull up the bill so I can read it. Uh I, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have an interlinated version of this, but um there we go. There's the, the amendment up. So just adding clarity that when we talk about a required hearing, it would be at the commencement of the pre, pre uh employment hiring process. So the bill currently is written, says the Baltimore City Fire Department shall notify the Baltimore City Council that the Fire Department has began, begun the hiring process for entry-level fire suppression or emergency medical supervisor, services positions, or has moved into a new phase of the hiring process for those positions. So what we intended to do with Amendment Number One was to narrow that focus so that you're not having to come every single time you're entering a new phase of the hiring process, but specifically during the pre-employment process. Uh is what we wanted to narrow the focus so that it would reduce the number of times that you're coming to the council. And so my understanding is that based on your remarks today and our conversations, that that pre-employment process isn't something that you're doing annually. It's as you are opening up the list again, which as you, you have said, uh is not very often. It can be two years, it can be five years, it can be seven years. But we're saying, ever you do open that list, you should come to the council. So this is not something that you would be here five times a year. It wouldn't, you wouldn't even really be here annually. Um it's here as the list opens. So I don't understand how that would be a huge burden for the department to come once every five years to talk about the pre-employment plan.
I, um, Councilman Burnett, the, the, I want us to keep in mind that there's a couple of things. The goal is to do it every two years. And also we're hiring EMS positions, which are EMT and paramedics. So that opens, that can open more than once a year possibly, right? So I'm, 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 um, the only reason why we add the language we did was, is exactly what she said, was to, to specifically, you know, pinpoint a, a, a specific time and space when the process, before the process begins and then to move forward with the conversation or whatever representations that the council deemed necessary for us to do. That, because if, if that wasn't the case, every time we go through every stage of it and we go through every, those four stages, whether it's EMT firefighter or EMT and paramedic, that it would continuously, you know, be an ongoing process. That's, and that's the only reason why we pointed that out. We figured that was the most effective way, most cost-effective way on, on personnel as well because we, we have very limited resources there. The same people, like I said, that are gonna come to present to you are gonna be some of the same people that are gonna be out doing the recruitment efforts and everything associated with that.
Thank you, uh Chief Ford, and thank you, Councilman Burnett, for walking us through that. Any other questions about the proposed amendments?
Mr. Chair, um I don't seem to have the Fire Department's in my inbox. I wonder if staff might be able to send them over. I'm sorry if I missed them. Um and is it, is the issue, if I'm understanding correctly, that the, the, the reporting and coming to before the council issue is more around timing? Um where the, if, I'm just trying to clarify, if you don't mind. Um Councilman Burnett, is it, you know, you want them to come before us every time they open the recruitment list uh to tell us what their strategy is, uh or the eligibility list, excuse me? And the Fire Department is saying they just want to come before us once a year or every so often? Again, I don't have the amendment in front of me, so I'm just trying to um figure it out.
The, the proposed uh amendments from the Fire Department are to not come at all. Uh and I don't mean to be curt, but that's, that's what it would result in. It would just produce a report in lieu of coming to the council.
That's what I thought, okay, uh huh, okay. And yours is more often, just given when they open up the list.
Correct.
And you think that's gonna be, uh Chief Ford, do you think that's gonna be more than once a year?
Uh for EMT, uh for, for EMS positions, which are EMT and paramedic, yeah, it's gonna be more than once a year. And um the EMT firefighter position is, is a more extensive position. And so that, that list is a larger list every year. I mean, the first, the first time we opened it, when I got here, we had over 7,000 people apply for the job. And um so it, it's, it's, it's a cumbersome list to itself. And I, 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 I need to point out the fact, uh Councilwoman, that we are not adverse to, to coming before the council. That's not, that's, that's not what I'm, what I'm arguing against. Um, um initially, my concern was, is that before every stage in the process, um it, it would be challenging because it's hard enough for me to put people together to do the recruitment efforts and the things I need to be done from an administrative standpoint. I, I'm, I'm, I'm expressing honestly how lean we are, because last time, when this happened, literally we had to shut down the process for a little while, reset dates and come back out. And I just, I just want to be, I, I'd like to be a lot more deliberate about it, that's all. I am, I am. I am, I am, I am proud, I am honestly proud of what we've been able to accomplish to this point. So quite frankly, I don't mind talking about it. I just want to be in the position where where we're effective about what we're doing and deliberate about it, that's all.
Thank you.
I want to just clarify, Councilwoman Ramos's question about E M T, how often do you put out for E M T?
It it could go, E M T could go out every year and paramedic could too as well. Primarily because we're competing for a couple reasons. We are competing with with neighboring agencies. And we're competing with neighboring agencies. And and we, we don't get a large pool of candidates that apply at a time. And so that's, that's the only challenge. And I'll, I'll, I'll go back to what I, what I said earlier. I am, I am, the fact of the matter is, I'm for coming for the council and and talking about what we do.
I, I think, I think Councilman Glover, did you have something you want to say, Councilman Glover? I saw you pop on for a second.
Yeah, you guys hear me? Because I'm having problems with. Okay. So Chief Ford, is this, this has anything to do with the amendment? I'm just worried about the recruitment part of it. Do you guys have in place now, or do you, do you plan to have in place in the future, on how we can attract more high school minorities and women, excuse me, getting them, excuse me, getting them out of high school, more minorities and women to recruit to the Baltimore City Police Department, excuse me, to the Baltimore City Fire Department, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, Ms. Ms. Councilman, we are, we're continuously working on that. We have, like we said, we have the high school program that that we've been using to bring in younger people in the department. We have worked to reach out to all all areas of the city in particular, because as I stated earlier, we literally put boots on the ground in order to encourage people to apply. The challenge that we've had historically is is that either, several reasons, and some of the same reasons are national. It's, it's, it's not a position that people commonly see themselves in as far as females and people of color. Also, it is, it, some people are challenged with filling out the application because it's done online. So to that end, we send people literally out in the field and and we developed a diverse committee of of around fifty, fifty or sixty people who are minority recruitments, who go out, sit down, set up applications, fill out the applications for people. We do pop-ups in in the process, in particular firefighter, E M T, E M T firefighter, because it is, it it attracts such a big list of people.
Okay, thank you.
But I'd like to point this out again, not adverse to to any hearings.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you. So thank you so much, Chief Ford, for for coming before the council. I had a question related to percentages of, you know, percentages of demographics while they're targeting for. Do you all have those specific percentages? So like, you know, fifty percent African American, sixty, you know, forty percent Asian and Pacific Islander. I didn't see, I didn't see that in the resolution. I just wanted to check to see if you all have those, those percentages that you're shooting for when you're, when you're recruiting.
The numbers that we're shooting for?
Yes, sir.
I'll give you the numbers that we're getting. And 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 we do establish goals every year, but we had, I don't think we wrote those figures down. The most important, the most important thing historically has been to increase the number of 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 those applicants in those areas and 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 quite frankly, historically, we've done pretty well with that.
Okay, I just wanted to, just to clarify if there was any like quantifying around.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, we have that, and I'll make sure you get it, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. Any other questions about the amendments as proposed by Councilman Burnett? And I want to remind you, we're, we're not going to vote on this today. We're gonna call a work session to finish this, this bill again. Any other questions? Okay, with that, I want to thank everybody today. We're, this, we're gonna revisit this, this bill at a later date to be announced in the council meeting. This hearing is adjourned or in recess until we announce it again. Thank you.
Thank you.